We now are on record, opening meeting for ordinance. March eighth, two thousand seventeen.
Do you have the agenda up?
I do not have it up, but it looks like we have several items that are on the agenda. We're so free to talk to. Ordin- I mean, food trucks, plastic bags. Medical marijuana, I think.
Recreational marijuana.
Recreational marijuana.
Uh, zoning ordinance, so.
Yeah, so, I think all of it's open. We have public speak.
Yeah.
If there's something other than what's on the agenda, that...
No, I can't believe the plastic bags.
People could come to talk about it. That would, now would be the time to do it formally. So, an agenda item. Do you have a preference?
We can start with the, um, the plastic bags.
Plastic bags.
Okay, I don't know what your proposal is, or is your proposal already up?
I'm sorry, you're, you're...
Alexandria Moynihan.
Alexandria Moynihan?
Yes.
From, what, what, where?
East Hampton, oh, Seventy Plains Street.
Seventy Plains. Thank you.
Oh, I live on Plain Street, Plain Street. Are you, do you have the fence in your yard at Seventy? Or is that next to you?
I have a double lot, so it's a fence way, way back.
I ha- I live at one, one oh three. So, you know where that beautiful Craftsman house was built? The, like, dream home of someone's retirement? I live across the street from it.
Well, I was saying, no, I, I drive up and down Blaisd.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, what am I saying? I live on Strong Street, not on Plain Street.
Okay, this is all good.
You know what I'm saying?
All right, folks.
The last time I saw was Strong, which is over there, and I'm over there.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
They're close to one another. Let's go, Alexandria.
I don't think I need to be here.
Plastic bags, please.
Okay, so, I, I have no idea what's, what proposal is up, so, um, if you wanna throw me a few things that's up, so I can give my...
Maybe jump in.
Yeah, yeah, let's start with that.
Tamara's actually introduced it, and most familiar.
We had brought, yeah, it's almost been a year now since we first started discussing it, and brought it up at a time when we were doing a lot, okay, so, when it comes to greening the community, there's two ways to go with it. Energy, and being green with the energy, and then waste management, and being green with the waste management. So, we got to the point of recognizing that in East Hampton, we actually don't have waste management as part of our municipality. We have to have other trucks come in, like Dusos or...
Yeah, Dusos.
Yeah, Dusos and, um, all the different waste management companies come in and then bring the garbage other places.
Right.
So, when we're looking at whether or not we wanna initiate a plastic bag ordinance, part of it is, well, to what end? Are we trying to stop? Are, are we trying to clear up our, our landfills? Well, we don't have landfills in East Hampton. Are we trying to do it as a service to the neighboring towns and their landfills? And I don't know, you know, there, there are many different possibilities for why it would be done. Um, and then there were, uh, we did a more of a scientific presentation about the difference between the impact on the environment for plastic bags, for recyclable bags, and for paper bags. And all three of them have both pros and cons to them. And in the initial meetings, when we were asking for public input, there was really no huge consensus on which way to go. There was, some people wanted to see something done, but they didn't know what. Some people wanted paper. A lot of people didn't want the bulkiness of paper and the expense of paper. So then, there was actually a large discussion about the, um, post-consumer recycled bags in Big E's and using that as a model for the community to encourage other stores to do that. So, then, um, it, that's kinda where it is right now. We haven't really moved forward since then, but we know that it's, there's no clear-cut path for what would be the best, and we had, um, talked about whether or not we would be, um, encouraging stores to charge a fee for the difference in the bags, if we would be asking, um, the, what is, um, Chamber of Commerce to do a survey of the different businesses in town. Um, so those are all still possibilities, but right now, we have no definitive plan for the future.
We also talked about, I think, bottom-up?
Yeah.
As opposed to top-down kind of ordinance? Coming from the community itself, as opposed to...
Yeah.
Then a member of the city council introducing something without either the chamber, oftentimes you get chamber interest, you get sections of towns interested in zoning. Sometimes you get school folks interested in something, and then they align with another group. This didn't seem to have that organic kind of growth from, from the community. But yet, when the subject was brought up, we had a pr- a fairly good, we didn't fill the big room upstairs.
Right.
We filled, we filled the little room downstairs, and, and I think there was a lively debate.
Yeah.
And, and certainly seemed, I think, to me, greater interest in moving forward with something on the plastic bag issue than folks saying, geez, no, we really don't need that. Although, we did, we did have specific members of certain businesses say, geez, we really wanna have plastic bags, for example, to take out restaurants, because food can spill over and leak if we use only paper materials. That isn't, isn't good. So, there was, there was, there was that input, I recall very strongly, but there wasn't, like, a lot of folks saying, geez, I like my plastic bags, stay away from plastic bags, we don't think that's a good idea. So, I, I think the community was leaning toward that, and that was my tip.
Yeah, and we were actually going to do that, um, ground up with the schools, and have more of a, an arts component to it, with either making art projects with recycled bags or doing the, um, the pa- not paper, but cloth bags, and doing that, and that was where, we used to have a different, um, arts director, and right after we had agreed that we would do that and approach her, the job switched. And so, it was vacant for a while, so, a lot of things came together at the same time.
It was just so hard.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I, I can tell you that, I guess I was first approached by someone, I guess who might have been on committee, I really don't know. I've never seen her around, and I don't know her background, but she asked me, well, I thought about it, and, and I says, well, several things, uh, we have, we sell, at the store, we sell a canvas bag. And, so that's number one. Number two, we also offer the plastic, and we also offer paper. So, I said, so, so, again, in my own naivety, I didn't know what she was looking for, but I said, gee, I just, I just think it's, and I think, oh, Northampton already had passed the, the, the ban on plastic. And we are having people coming from Northampton irate, and they're saying, this is so stupid, it rains, and the ba- the paper bag rips, and just the whole... And I said, and I, again, I can be quite clear, but I said, I don't get it. And I'm gonna tell you truth here, I don't get it. Cause I said, could we have a little common sense of how about the choices? Now, the, the people that come in and use the canvas, and a lot of people, I think they're terrific. They, they use the canvas, they even buy these cute little damn bags that are so, I mean, baskets almost. And, so, I'm seeing, I would say, I can't say a third of our customers use, use that, but certainly water.
Make what business?
Big E's.
Big E's, okay.
And I'm speaking all for myself, not for the, not for the company.
Right, of course.
And I told, I said, I asked Mike if I had his permission, he said, do whatever you want. So, so, so my, when I first heard, I said, can we have choices? Now, the other thing I figured, you know, I'm speaking, cause I am working at Big E's, they give a five-cent coupon to everybody who has their canvas bag, or even if they bring the same plastic bag that they had before, we still give them that, that nickel. And they have a choice, they can donate to the community. Now, uh, Mike Suferson has four different charities right up, up near the door, so you can put your five cent coupon in there if you choose. He matches it, one's food, for the, uh, food kitchen, or, uh, one's for the, um, trail, um, the rail travel, I believe, one's for the garden, uh, and I forgot the other one. So, there's four different charities that he has out there. And I said, he matches every five cents with another five cents. So, I guess, as a community, and I was thinking, can we? So, I guess that's, that was my concern, is that I'd like us to have some choices, not dictated.
Yeah.
I think that's where we took, got, did get a lot of input in that regard. And, and, so I think that's where we're headed, if we're headed anywhere in, in terms of a, a, a decision on this.
The, the other thing that, that someone said to me, cause we had a little discussion at the store, one of my coworkers, and she said something about a plastic bag, she said, they're going into the ocean. I'm looking around, I'm, where the hell's the ocean? You know, we're nowhere near it, but, and I, I have, I have Dusos pick up my, my trash. I have a container for plastic and bottles, and I have trash trash.
Right.
And I have to say that. And the bags I use from Big E's, and I use a plastic one, I bring them all back to the store. They have, again, they have a bin right outside of the door. So, they'll, those plastic bags are recyclable.
Right.
So, they do that. So, I was like, again, back to choices, and that's where I'm at with that.
I don't, I don't think we were at all thinking, at least from, I can speak for myself, wasn't thinking of banning plastic bags entirely. The eco-friendly bags, I think, were always gonna be an option here for East Hampton. Uh, I don't, and, and, so people coming over from Northampton saying, geez, paper breaks all the time. I'm not sure why they don't offer the eco-friendly bags.
In Northampton?
I hadn't heard, I hadn't seen them, and I haven't heard that. I hear we're using plastic, or paper bags in the drains, and they break.
Yeah, well, as I said, that, that's the only thing, as far as I know, I don't know the whole ordinance of Northampton, that was a, that they banned all plastic bags.
Right.
So, that's why, as I said, these people are coming from Northampton, shopping at our stores, saying they're really ticked off by it. And I, again, as I said...
And that's good for us to hear, yeah.
Yeah, and I was saying, again, I, I like choices, please. So, that's kinda where I was coming from. I had no idea where this, where this was at any level, but, um, I wanted to...
Certainly glad to hear it, yeah.
And I guess, you said about, uh, Dusos picking up, and I, again, I don't know what you mean, citywide or whatever. Uh, Dusos has a very strong, uh, and waste management has a very strong recycling, uh, and you probably know a lot more than I do, just watching on TV or what's on. And fascinated by how they, how they really do tremendous work with recycling. It's, it's work for them, but it's also profitable, you know, so.
Yeah.
Cause people want to, I can say honestly, people really, when they come to the store, I, I can see the conscientiousness of people.
Right.
And, so, I like that too, but I also like, that was my, my really key, my choice.
Yeah.
Okay.
While, while you're here, any, any thoughts that you might have about getting folks to bring their own bags in more? Or to reuse cloth bags? Is there anything?
No, I, well, I think it's, it's, uh, well, again, what I see is more and more people doing it, you know. They, they, well, the other thing I have to say, truthfully, some of the canvas bags are so damn filthy, I wouldn't put dog poop in them.
Yeah.
But this is a human, this is a human being, you know? I mean, I, I used to have apartments, please, but, you know, it's sad, sad, but this is again, the human nature. Uh, so sometimes I'm putting food into a filthy bag, saying, are you kidding me?
Yeah.
Are you kidding me? The only thing I, I find that we can do almost automatically with people is when we have chicken, I ask them, I says, when they have the recycled bags, I says, would you like me to put the chicken first in plastic? And ninety percent of them will say yes. Just a bit.
Ninety percent do, right, right.
What's that?
Ninety percent say yes, about putting the meats, the chicken, chicken.
Chicken, but primarily meat sometimes, cause the, the bottom of the, the meat bag might, might have, uh, the salt, it might have a little bit of blood in it, juices, or whatever it is, whatever it is.
In terms, in terms of bags that you wouldn't want your groceries in, the cloth bags that you wouldn't necessarily want your groceries put into, how many? How many of those cases would you say there are?
That, that they don't want to be?
No, the...
I'm sorry, was, was...
You've described some bag, I was trying to be polite. You've, you've described some bags as unsanitary, unhealthy.
Filthy. I don't miss.
Filthy.
Filthy.
Yeah. What percentage of those bags that are presented for insert of food?
Oh, that are filthy?
Would you say are filthy?
No, I would say maybe ten.
Is it a few, a few?
Ten, ten percent of, of the people that recycle, say, so out of twenty-five percent, so ten percent of that, yeah.
That seems still pretty too high.
You think it's high?
To me, too high, uh, too, too high a number to encourage more people to do the same.
Well...
To, to me, I don't, I'm looking at that, and I'm going, geez, I mean, if you said, okay, we have one percent, two percent, okay, then, uh, you're probably not gonna change many people's behavior, but at ten percent, that's...
Well, maybe I'm finicky to it.
That sends me, well, I'm, I'm finicky to it, and I wouldn't lie.
I have some people that, you know, say they wash it every day. And then we also have some, the other bag that I, I adore, it's a, it's almost a nylon bag. And it's, you go throw things in, and they, they bring them up, and they, they, uh, women like it, because they grow up into a little tiny thing like this, so they can put them in their pocketbook, and then open up them. So that the, the nylon bags are wonderful. And some people do crochet bags, which are very expandable.
Yeah.
So, there's, there's some creativity there, so. And I might be wrong about the, the percentage of about dirty bag.
Ten percent, it could be, it could be... You're sensitive to dirty bags, so I hear you, all right.
Alexandria Moynihan, so ten percent of you are filthy.
Are filthy.
Okay, well, those out there who might, those out there...
No, don't worry about that.
A little public service announcement to those who might be bringing their bags to the stores. Please, bring in clean bags, would be our, our, our strong message.
Now, the truth, well, the truth is, people that are, that are unsanitary are unsanitary.
Unsanitary, okay.
From top to bottom.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that's human nature, I think.
Yeah, I mean, we really have to think about, as a committee, whether or not we're gonna move forward with this, or remove it without prejudice. And I would be fine, either way, um, I would be fine with seeing it coming. If, if we moved it without prejudice, and environmentalists in the city felt really strongly about it, then I would encourage them to start a campaign. If, um, it didn't, then they didn't.
Well, he knows, and I'm just, I'm, I'm, sorry, my counter campaign.
Yeah, yeah, because I said, I'm not, I'm...
Yeah, well, you know, it, it, again, back to the same thing, is what are they trying to do? I mean, like I said, I, we do so much, I, and I love it, I'm, we used to own Jim's Bag Store, there was, there was, you know, recycling with the bottles.
Right.
Recycling with the plastic, it was just, it's fine.
Yeah.
But, um, you know, that's the other thing, that... Again, I don't know about municipalities, in fact, some people say they love the plastic bags, cause they put the kitty litter in it. They love a second, because they don't have to buy trash bags, they, the little baskets in the back, or something like that, yeah.
I, 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 I'm, I'm a fan. I'm a fan of those, of the bags that you can use a second, third purpose, depending on the purpose.
Yeah.
But I don't see where the eco-friendly bags don't serve the same purpose. So, if you have a choice of an eco-friendly bag, like the ones used at Big E's, or a plastic bag that clearly was designed without recycled materials, I would certainly be happy to use the recycled material bag. Although, there was some literature that we, we talked about that says, maybe, maybe there's more energy taken in recycling the bags. More, more energy to reheat the bags, recycle, create new bags.
Well, I guess I was surprised.
And I don't, and I don't know if that, if that was really conclusive.
Right, right.
Uh, or may even be enough to get people more to be thinking of bringing their own cloth-type bags, cause I'd like... I, I, after a year of thinking about these subjects, I'm more inclined to say, let's move forward.
Do you do?
Although, I can certainly see the merit, the merit of, 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 uh, putting things on hold without prejudice, and, and waiting for the community to kind of bring it, bring it forward. So, what, what, what kind of bags? Well, we have probably about twenty-five cloth bags that work between the house and our two vehicles. And, and the problem I have with this is reaching the, is getting inside the door with the bags. I must say, I admit it. They always end up in the car for some reason, and I get through the grocery line, and then I say, oh, shoot, I left them all. Do I go back out, or do I, do I, you know? So, so what happens is, I always think if there was a reminder at the door, of that little, that, that little...
We're not gonna babysit you anymore, your wife can stare.
No, but some kind, some kind of reminder that said, you know, a, a little, a little sticker that said, hey, did you bring your bag today? Oh, geez, I mean, you know, okay, you can go back out, you know?
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna teach you how to do this.
I hear you. How do you, hey, listen, I'm always up to learn.
I'm gonna teach you how to do this.
Go ahead.
You, you just do a psychological picture. As soon as you leave your, your car, your keys are in your hand. You say, I'm buying food, I need my bag. Simple as that. It is so...
Put that picture in your brain.
That's right.
So, I'm gonna repeat this for the, for, for, for the audience today.
Well, no, you...
Put the picture, for anyone who may be suffering from having bags and not bringing them in, for, for whatever reason.
And we allow you to go run out to your car, come back, we allow that.
Oh, I, I, we appreciate it, we appreciate it.
I'm gonna tell you something funny, and I wanna, I don't wanna take up this gentleman's time. Years ago, I was watching a TV...
This has gotta be entertaining.
Years ago, years ago, I was watching a TV program, and, and I, I don't know if it's a psychologist, I, I don't know the gentleman's title. However, he says, you know, I'm gonna teach you right now how to, he was like, you always forget, you don't know where you put your keys. You don't, I always forget where I put my car keys. Well, I'm a person of habit, so that's not an issue for me. However, the funniest thing, he said, okay, as soon as you drop your keys, you make them explode. And you go, what? That sounds so damn stupid. So, if you go home tonight, and you drop your keys, make them explode, you'll never forget where you, where you put them. And I played that game for about a week. It was interesting.
Yeah.
Really, very interesting.
Like just the verbal noise?
Yep, yep, or you can see the poof, he wants you to really get into it. Soon as you drop the keys, you see the poof, you hear the bang, ooh.
Cool.
So, that's it.
Great ideas, great ideas.
I'm done.
Thank you.
I am done.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
I'm, I'm kind of nosy, what do you fear for?
Well, I wasn't actually here for that.
Oh.
But since I do shop at the E's, and then since there have been times where I've done the exact same thing, I forgot the bag, and, and there, so I'm making the determination, I think, there's what it is. If it's, if it's too many articles that I really need some bag for, I will actually say, no, I'm gonna say, excuse me, give me one second, and I...
Oh, sure, well, that's fine.
But oftentimes, if I'm just getting, you know, two or three things, I just say, ah, I don't need the bag, I'm carrying a lot, and I'm walking. Scaring stuff up without a bag, but I do it because I forgot...
Oh, no, no, people do that all the time.
Do they? Well, and, and, so, that's, that's where I'm gonna come, but I've done that, I can't tell you how that comes.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know what it is, cause it's not that complicated.
No, you think about something...
It's not, it's not that hard.
And God knows why, rushing in, I close my door, and I kind of rush in, and I'm, no. I've been through this process before in another municipality, and it is a hard issue.
Yeah.
And the prob- here's the problem. The new single-use bags, though they certainly have their convenience, the, the problem is how they break down. So, in other words, they were, if you notice, they've been thinner and thinner and thinner and thinner, because technology gets better. But there's that problem, cause I understand that the problem is when they break down, and they're designed, actually, in a way, too. And so, they can't break down small enough without causing harm, usually to ocean wildlife. And, and stuff does end up in the ocean a lot more than, you know, I think, we don't live by the ocean. It's not the, the bags, but when they break down in nature, they flow out in various rivers, whatever. That is what I understand is the, the part of the problem environmentally. So, the problem is, of course, that, so if you, if you don't make them so that they, they break down, then, then you're actually having more inorganic material out in general. So, I have the bags that are, to your point about them being dirty, we have the canvas, and we have the ones that are plasticized on the outside. So, you can wipe them, but, you know, you just can't throw them in the...
Wash them.
You can't throw them, they're not designed to be cleaned that way, like a canvas bag.
Yeah.
I don't find it usually a huge issue, because it depends on what I'm buying. I mean, obviously, I wouldn't put, like, raw fruit in, or something like that, but, but, you know, or a can, or something like that, it's not a... You know, even if it's not for speed, it's not really, you know, a huge issue. I, I understand, there's, people like choice, and choice is good. People like encouragement, Big E's does give encouragement, do that, that's what we do. Um, whether we go so far as to say, as some communities have, I'm pretty sure one, that, you know, we recognize the harm caused by those single-use bags. So, um, you ban single-use bags. Now, a lot of stores do allow people to bring those bags, and some, as you said, bring the same ones that they've used before, some point, you got a container.
Yeah, a bin right up.
So, you know, that certainly is better.
That was another thing we were talking about, instead of, instead of, um, limiting the bags, one idea we had was to encourage businesses to have more recycling units, so that people would actually recycle the bags they have. So...
Encourage you to make carrots, is always just something, uh, a bigger step.
Than a big stick, carrots rather than a big stick.
Sometimes you need, sometimes you need both.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 oh, for sure.
You know, as many carrots is always better.
I get it, you know, like I said, that, you know, I'm not thrilled about the bottle bill, but I'm glad it did happen. And I says, but the other point, you know, I used to clean, when we used to have, like, when I was, my, my store in the back store, we had a cleanup day, and I was down there for at least fifteen, twenty years, cleaning up the pond, planting flowers, et cetera. And we couldn't believe the filth, and I'm saying, well, guess what? People, some people are just pigs. That's it. Then what are you gonna do with it? What are you gonna do with it? Unless you walk down there behind them, say, didn't your mama teach you nothing?
Well, we live in a disposable society, frankly.
And it's true, yeah, we do.
We look at it.
We live in a disposable society, and everything that we kind of have is just evolved to the, to be disposable.
Yeah, but, you know, you're saying disposable, but I'm, I'm calling it back the same thing, dirty. People are not, they're not clean. And I tell you, I got one more story, and throw me out here. My, my parents used to own Robert Javan Theater. Well, I, as a kid, from, for, since the age of ten years old, I've been picking up papers and cigarette butts and, and trash all my life. And so, when I see trash on the road, I literally put it in a trash bin. But it's, it's here, I don't wanna see it dirty. This is something I'm teaching, this is so cool. And I'm gonna leave. My daughter was at, um, the St. Patrick's Cathedral, uh, Christmas Day, and she, she says, ma, I was so disgusted. She said, or more, and she's like myself, tidy. She said, I saw more big gold, bottles, and, and not bottles, but, um, soda containers, on the steps of the, of St. Patrick's Cathedral, and on, on the sidewalk. And I said, that's just outrageous, I, I don't get it. I mean, I'm pretty sorry to get out here and start giving confessions, but anyway. But I also saw a can, and I wish, I wish I could move the can. There's a can that's coming out, but they've already, it's called, it's a lighted can, camp, and it, it thanks people for putting trash in. And it's for cities, I think they're doing it in Brooklyn now. And I just happened to pop on, online, and you think I could remember anything about other than the, the cans, it's thank you for putting trash in. And because it's lighted, uh, and it has little, uh, animation on it, that the kids are paying attention, saying, oh, I wanna, I wanna feed the, the can. So, it's, again, it's a teaching mechanism.
Yeah.
But, uh, again, I, I...
That's interesting.
Yeah, but I also think a lot of it, it starts at home. In fact, my grandson is a year and two years old, they're, um, going to the, uh, Westover, you know. As we walk along, he noticed cigarette butts, he says, watch it, look at that. I knew exactly who that was, he said, piggy people? I said, yeah, piggy people.
Ah.
And I said, ah, shoot, you know, so, I said...
That's great.
Okay, well, thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you for, uh, for sharing them.
Thanks for coming in.
We're, we're glad you did.
Okay. I'm watching this.
All right, all right.
Have a good night.
Great, thank you, Arnie.
All right. Good luck with your stuff.
Thank you.
Do you wanna, um, talk about...
I just, I feel just, I think we've gone a long way so far in, in, in the committee discussing this. And I'd hate to leave whatever momentum we have generated about moving forward.
Yeah.
That would be, I guess, the only thing I would say toward removing without prejudice, is that there has been some momentum, and I think people are thinking a little bit more.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'd like to create a way to nudge the process along. And I don't see a full ban of, of, of plastic, so that... But if we had the eco-bags, we're all right, but then, at least, even if it, it's a balance with the eco-bags, that, okay, maybe we're not saving, we're, we're spending more energy, but we're creating more of a consciousness in some way. It may help people to move toward more cloth bags, especially those folks who may bring and clean their cloth bags. Cause I think that's really the, the direction we need to go, because we are a disposable society, a disposable society. We're throwing away so many things. And I think we need to raise the consciousness to stop that process.
Well, continue with that, obviously, uh, I, I, I think you're right, but I, I would also say that it's easy for me, and maybe yourself, and yourself, if, cause my grocery bill, I'm, I'm there every day, so I have a bag, and, you know, I guess I recycle it, it comes right back to the store. I don't, I don't generally use it a second time, but I just usually, I just leave it in my garage, fill up the bag when the, the bag itself is still, I dump it at Big E's. But, um, that's easy enough for me to do, but I cannot see someone who's spending two hundred dollars on groceries. That damn, that cart is filled, and we're shoving things in a plastic bag, I can't imagine them bothering... I can't imagine them bothering, I don't know, it's almost, it's, I don't wanna say it. I guess that person that I see that buys that much groceries, they're recycling the bags somehow, but the canvas bag doesn't do them, I don't know. I guess, I guess maybe that's why I see less of that.
You see less of people bringing in multiple canvas bags?
Right, yeah. Or. Probably the most they bring in would be three, yeah, every once in a while four.
So, so having at least eight or ten in your, in your trunk.
Yeah.
Is not a normal thing.
I, I sometimes think it's, it's the mom who's got three kids, and she's just running one of them. It's just too much. You know, it's too much, it's, you know. So, but I, but I agree with you that, that if we can continue, and I, again, I think Biggie's is doing a phenomenal job with, with, again, all the encouragement from charity to, to the buyer set a rebate on and on. We'll go from there.
Thank you so much.
I'm sorry, I see you're taking way too much of that. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
So is there some, some way that we could maybe think of?
How would you feel about recommending it as a ballot question?
That's an interesting.
Because everyone who keeps coming in says we don't wanna be told what to do, but what if it was a community decision?
That might be the best way to go.
I would much rather see a community decision on the ballot about something like that versus human rights issues.
Let's, let's not draw too many distinctions here. But, I, I think, I think, I think to stay on the, on the, on the positive side, I think it may be an appropriate one.
It just seems like.
I kinda like the idea because it would give the community a chance to really talk about the issues.
Right.
That's, that's some very, very good thought. All right.
I guess we would just need to think about what we're asking for the ballot, if we're asking to ban single-use plastic bags, but not, not other choices? Or are we?
It could, it could be, it could be as far as, 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 as developing an ordinance, summarizing it, and just putting it on the ballot for the community to discuss.
Yeah. Well, we for the community to vote, right?
Well, to discuss and then go to the, to the election and vote on the subject. And that may, that may be a way.
I'm not understanding the discussed part, where is that coming in?
The discuss is, I, I don't, I don't envision having a ballot question and not having people talk about the ballot question that's coming up.
Right.
You know, I'm, I'm sorry, maybe, maybe I'm not thinking about this clearly, but it seems to me that if, 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 let's say, by whatever the period, the proper period is, it has to be, the ballot question probably has to be approved by. By, by the Attorney General's office, I think, if you're gonna put a ballot question on. Yeah, it's a tight timeline.
It's gotta be like, by May at least.
So, so if that were put together and, and submitted, then folks would could start talking about, do we wanna vote yes or no on this subject? As opposed to having. So, so I think, I think that would maybe create more, even more discussion about how we live in our society in terms of single-use disposable items.
Yeah. And I, yeah, I, I think it's a time when we want to put it on the ballot too, because I think people's. If it's on the ballot, it will give a lot more education to people about what the issues are. And so, in trying to find out where, where a person stands on it, a lot of people would take that opportunity to try to learn more about.
How do I wanna vote?
The environmentalist aspect, or the, the social class issue with being able to afford it, particularly small businesses.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah.
So I think that presents some good options, thank you.
And we could look into other municipalities that have put it on the ballot to see in what ways do they present it as a ballot question.
I'm not sure, I've heard of one that's put it on the ballot.
It's kind of been on the ballot.
It has to be somewhere, I mean, it's a big, big country here.
Right.
All right. Good with moving on to the next subject, food trucks? I, I'm almost ready to remove food trucks, but reluctant to discuss it without Salem being here. But I think we're almost ready to remove that item. Did you wanna share with us what, what your subject wanted to do?
Yeah, it's on the marijuana.
On marijuana? Come on in. Please, and for the record.
L-I-N-S-K-Y, by, for the ballot.
Medical or recreational?
So actually recreational, but, you know, I understand I have had a couple of conversations about this. So I understand that the reason why the recreational may have been on your agenda is because upon the medical marijuana license, that there may be some request to expand that license in some ways that might accommodate future recreational sales. I think.
Oh, are you talking about the dispensary and wanting to.
Yeah, so that may be the way it comes in, but I mean, we don't really need to discuss that. I, I know the plant department, I'm not worried about it. Well, last night I just had it on their agenda for zoning purposes, et cetera. And I think you might understand where it ended up, is that everyone's in this waiting pattern, waiting to find out a little bit more about what the state does before you can really move ahead and plan and, and, or. Look at what municipal policy should be. I do know that is, there was a, first Massachusetts municipality took a, this had a recent ballot question, I'm trying to remember the town.
Where?
No, it wasn't.
Are you talking about a moratorium?
Yeah.
South Hadley has a moratorium.
It wasn't a moratorium, it actually, it was actually a, I just read in the paper, I can't really see it on, earlier today, but there was a town that actually took a, had a ballot question.
Okay.
And, and ballot question was basically to opt-out.
Right, the opt-out provision, right.
So, so, so that's gonna be banned, but, but we don't, you know, we're all waiting for really essentially the finalized version. You know, which is what will end up being in the.
Right.
So, I, I, I'm here, actually on behalf of the East Hampton Health Commission. Obviously, the coalition has at every juncture, um, as much educational programming on marijuana as possible to make a program that was less fall in advance of the ballot question. Basically, you know, updating people on the latest information, scientific information about that. And also, you know, we, we are all looking to most jurisdictions in which there has been legalization of recreational use, specifically Colorado. And I know that there are a number of people, state legislators here in Massachusetts, also have visited Colorado or whatever. So we are trying to monitor that, to find out what, you know, what are the lessons learned in Colorado? The thing is that we're so early on, the lessons.
Right.
We're in the process of that, so I think we see our job is to try to monitor that and help people, and help communities want like policies that make sense for them.
Mm-hmm.
And why, and what the experience may be in other places. But it's just gonna take some time before I think that we have that in place. But there are programs that are coming in this week, um, being helped by the, as Municipal Lawyers Association, it was at, uh, Clark. Excuse me, yeah, Clark, you're whispering. Um, on, on the status of the Massachusetts law and what people are thinking, we're doing a little to attend.
What time?
Uh, it's, uh, it's in the morning.
Oh, I saw that.
Did you see that?
Yeah, I have a business trip to Miami this weekend, I could leave in the mornings.
I think it's, I think it's.
Too bad for you.
I know, I know.
Say, say thirty to nine thirty is the registration period, and then the program was something else, I think, nine thirty to twelve. So.
I'm really curious, knowing that there have been made formal statements, there have been formal statements made by the White House about recreational. I'm wondering if a lot of municipalities are going to be recruited and waited out to see if they, you know, there's a lot of work for a business to put forth and then have it rescinded at the, at the federal level, and it's a lot of.
Yeah, well, it's, it's, I don't know if it's technically rescinded, I think what, I think what it is is a conflict of laws. I mean, that's, that's the environment that we've been in the last few years, that Colorado has been in, because the federal government, federal law hasn't changed.
Right.
It's the only question about whether, you know, the extent to which the federal government chooses to enforce federal law in jurisdictions in which state law has a variance. The law administration, for instance, by and large, you know, respected very few jurisdictions that, um, had different laws. Or didn't, didn't seek to clash with them. I think this administration is how many, it seems to be poised to be holding a clash and to continue to enforce and impose federal law in jurisdictions like state laws that vary. That's, that's the message, I think, that's kinda coming up. And it's true that individual businesses are gonna have to figure, hmm, if, if we're, if I'm still gonna be subject to federal enforcement that may affect my business, or I really wanna go in that direction.
That becomes a business decision, right?
Right.
That's a business decision. But, you know, as to, as to state law, I mean, you know, the border states speak, and you have the police honor. You have to, we, we, the problem, of course, is in passing complicated laws by ballot questions, it's like, it's not, it's not a good mechanism. Laws always have to be kind of, you know, tailored more carefully. And I think that, like I said, to their credit, they're saying, you know, it passed, we respect, you know, the will of the people, certain things are going to replace, but there are some areas that just need more work, need more massage, and there are lots. And as, so to their credit, they're taking that up, but as we say today, we don't know. So, I did wanted to say, obviously publicly, that the coalition, because it, you know, it has a very interest in this issue, wants to really work with the community to help, you know, with, with the municipality. Figure out its policy once, I think, the state, state law already set, and we'll, and we'll know what options we have as a community. Right, be it opt-out, be it opt-in partially, be it whatever. So, I think that we just wanna make sure that it's, we remain on the ball, and we'll continue to do the, you know, education programs.
If. If I might speak to segments of what you're saying, of what you've said. With regard to the opt-out, I think there is a very specific process.
Yes.
That requires being in the next state election in order to opt-out, if, if I'm not mistaken. And that would mean folks who would want the city to opt-out would have to take action right now in order to get onto the ballot and go through the process and get. I think the Attorney General's office involved in the ballot question for the municipality, so that the vote could take place at the next state election. I don't think the election they were talking about was something after, uh, April eighteen, April two thousand eighteen, which is the implementation date, as far as I understand. But it would be the next state election, so that's coming upon us quickly, as we just talked about. So, I haven't heard anyone taking that tack that felt that the city of East Hampton should be opting itself out and therefore having zero facilities available for sale. But there has been significant activity of, in the community about having us limit ourselves to twenty percent of the total number of licensed facilities to be operational. And we have that authority to do just that, by ordinance, to be able to go anywhere from a hundred percent of licenses that are now used for liquor and alcohol, for liquor and beer and wine, as I understand it, to twenty percent of that number, which I think is about two facilities. And we've received lots of material from many, many folks to give us opinions on that subject. So that is something that we ought to, in a full committee, discuss, I think, because there's been.
Yeah.
A number of people, and I would be inclined at this point to really view such a measure as moving slowly and taking this whole process cautiously. I'm not sure the number that we should have is twenty percent, but I'm not sure we should leave the door wide open to a hundred percent, because I, what I think is happening is folks are coming into East Hampton and setting up other types of shops. A head shop here, a smoke shop there, and, and I think that's coming in with the thought, well, once, once, we'll establish our business and we'll invest some money. And we ought to really be sending folks a signal, if that's their thinking, that we're not really going to be looking at ten or twelve licenses, we're looking at two or three, or four, or some other number. So I think that would be fair in some ways to take that subject on.
Another thing I was looking at with the state ballot initiative was the writing that each municipality has the right to collect, I don't know if it was two percent of the.
Yes, two percent tax, yes.
Put a two percent tax on it, and that might, that might be another possibility of using that two percent tax for educational purposes for youth in our, in our community. So that, that's another type of compromise that could happen, I think is worthy of discussing.
Well, I, I think the municipality has to vote to accept the two percent tax, if, if, if that's the case, if it's only two percent. I would certainly advocate that the tax be slightly higher than two percent. As the legislature tweaks this, with the argue, counterargument being that the higher the tax goes, the more you're likely to drive to a black market. Somebody who would say, okay, I can afford to pay a few dollars in tax, and a little bit of this, and I'm getting a reputable pride, I know what I'm getting, and I'm happy to purchase through state-recognized facilities. But I think a little bit higher for enforcement and for education would be appropriate. Any other thoughts on?
No, I think, um, one of the things that council could consider, and I really do, I say this without knowing whether other councils of other cities and towns have anybody, is that while the legislature is wondering, you decide a provision that existed in the initiative. That could change, it could not change, it could be wrong, it could be, you know, is that, you know, the council could say, well, this is what we like about the present law. Perhaps that we seek that the legislature may retain these provisions or something like that. And we have concerns perhaps about other provisions, and might like the legislature perhaps to look to do, perhaps consider different things in that. And maybe in the following, a resolution, you know, put it as a statement on behalf of the city that can be forwarded on through our representatives in the general court.
I think.
And then passing that on and maybe give a little bit of guidance, because it's, to their credit, like I said, the legislative leadership did say, we really have to tackle this, this bill. We understand that there are gonna be people who are gonna complain about it, right, because they're gonna say, we just had an election and it was a bill, and this is what people voted for. So I give them credit for saying, you know, that they got, and they did also say that they understood that, you know, it had to be right near the top of the legislative agenda, because you can't sit on this one, people are waiting.
Right.
So they presume moving, but, but what kind of guidance they may get, I don't know, if they're gonna hold a series of hearings or whether they feel that they have to work within this. And that's why I just mentioned, if the council was of mind about, you know, the certain things that we said, we might retain the ability to, to have a certain percentage, or, or whatever it is. Or, or liberalize the opt-out.
To weigh in on.
Because you could say, because maybe we need, we just need to, you know, be able to do that in a slightly less restricted fashion than the law provided, or whatever it is. If, if the council was of a mind, then that would be certainly an appropriate statement.
To weigh in on the subject, I think.
A little bit, yeah, by whatever, whatever form, if, if there was a singular line on this, which I do not necessarily know.
Well, we keep hearing, and you, as you reported apparently from last night's meeting in Planning, where everyone's in a wait-and-see mode.
That's what I read, that's what I read, I wasn't there last night.
Oh, okay. Wait-and-see mode, and yet I, I, I put this on our agenda so that we could really start talking about it, because there are lots of questions. It's all very new to, to our community. We have a segment of the population that clearly has said yes, others have said no. How do, you know, we're going forward with the yes, how do we make this all work and think through many of those issues in advance? And I, I still feel very strongly, we need to keep that approach, as opposed to, oh, let's all wait and see what the Cannabis Control Commission decides. And then in a month or two, we'll have, you know, once they do decide and get, share with the world what their decision is, we can go write new zoning laws and new, new ordinances. I think that's a little late. I, I like the approach of, let's think as best we can what's good for East Hampton, how do we proceed, and then advocate for those changes to the Cannabis Control Commission and to the state legislature. As they move forward.
It's a little bit of a catch-twenty-two. I can understand people saying, well, we are going to address this by zoning laws, you know, zoning laws has a certain process, you have to go, obviously, because, you know, it's, it's, it has a certain effect. And they say, well, it might depend, well, you know, are we talking about the allowance for X number of licenses or Y number? If it was, if people said, well, we're really looking at the twenty percent, that's gonna translate to two, or whatever. translate to two, or whatever, as compared to twenty, or something like that, and then people were thinking about zoning, and they said, well, that really affects our thinking, zoning-wise, because it's a big difference, you know, between.
Two.
And twenty.
Right.
You know, might alter our thinking, so that's why I can understand that, that thing, so we need to kind of, you know, know where we might be at.
Right.
I think the next step would be to call a joint meeting between Planningboro and the council ordinance.
That's really, having, having those, having it, you know, more seamless is, makes sense, right? And keep the ball rolling, you know, as I'm saying, time is up, you make a very much time is up, yes.
We have to look at the timelines for discussion, because once a subject is brought up, there may be certain timelines that we set in place.
Okay.
And our expert on this, Salem, isn't with us today, so we have to defer to Barb, I think.
Okay.
But I think that's something we can, we can pursue, so, thank you.
Okay, well, I appreciate that, it was on your turn.
Yes, and we're glad we were here, you were able to, to, to share with us.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, see you soon.
By the way, the, that program that I mentioned that's happening, they've already put out the materials, so I've forwarded, I hope that you, you want to forward it?
I would, I would love to see the materials, you could sort of.
Maybe, should I, what's the way of doing it?
J-P.
Should it be through the clerk's office or something like, or should it be, how do you get stuff?
You could, you could send it to JP at easthampton.org to.
Is it electronic?
It's electronic, yeah.
Electronic, and send it to the city. Cityclerk@easthampton.org so that.
Whatever, you just.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, send it to the city clerk, and then she'll distribute it to the entire council and send more information.
If you're gonna do it soon.
I'm gonna do it when I get back.
Yeah, well, send me a copy, because I, I certainly would consider going.
This is simply as simple as JB at.
J-P, JP.
JP at easthampton.org. Yeah, JP at easthampton.
Thank you. I would consider going, though I have a closing on Friday morning, and I'm just not sure how that's all gonna fit in.
I hear you.
Pay attention to the, to, to the business.
Yeah, yep.
I think we've covered, Salem had, was gonna talk about another subject, medical marijuana, and I'll leave that for him to introduce, if that makes sense, for you.
Zoning ordinance signs, consistency, inconsistencies, I thought we were done with that.
I thought we were pretty much, but I'm gonna just let, I think we should let Salem in on that.
Okay, and then the last one is the Human Rights Ordinance slash Committee.
You know, I, I think we discussed a lot of different angles on, on this subject, but I'm reluctant to not move, or to move it off our agenda without a real proposal from the person who introduced it, Councilor Hayes, and in deference to her, I guess, maybe we should reach out to her and ask her if there's something formal that she would have. I, I certainly was, I still am of the opinion that there, there could be a benefit to our community to have, the, the big issues, as always been, well, to report to the police, we don't want to report to, well, I'm not sure that you can't have a dual process, and I would be very interested in hearing the arguments of, okay, this is, I believe, this is really isn't, it is a police matter, but I also want to bring it to, to, to another group that can further discuss and, and get to the community and open up discussion on the topic. Or, I, I'm reporting it, so I, I'm reluctant to close the door on the Human Rights side committee, but I'm reluctant to, I mean, I don't really see its, its authority or powers, or maybe some conflicts in some ways with the policing. And, and I got a sense from the police that there was a little bit of conflict, and I'm not, I'm not sure if, if.
I had that impression as well.
That they, and I'm not, it wasn't all together, I'm not sure it was all voiced, and I think it has to be voiced. Maybe I'm reading, maybe I'm reading too much into it, I don't know.
No, I got the impression that it wouldn't be very welcome to have the city council observing.
Well, the Human Rights or Commission, let's say.
Right, so, I know, I know that they did talk about, once it's on a city council agenda, it's open meeting laws, and for an ongoing police investigation, it's.
That could then hurt.
But I, you know, I, I had thought a lot about what had happened with Sanctuary and stuff, and I really think that it's an opportunity, if we were to have a Human Rights Commission or a committee, I really think that one of the ways that that could be helpful would be put into writing, that we as a city council go through a training each, each new election for cultural competency, and having, these are.
This is, I'm, I'm, I'm here, I'm, yeah, this is interesting.
Presentations that are very common in academia, so if you have a constituent, for example, who is transgender, and you're wanting to, to talk with them, there's nothing that I would assume that would be in most counselors' personal history, unless they are advocates for the transgender community, that would help them understand how to use appropriate language. So, things like that, having that actually accounted for in a meeting, and saying, this is the best way to help the different communities, and having the same thing about race, and, you know, just having a workshop where we talk about what the issue, what the definitions mean, and what are some of the ways that, what are the reasons for fearing the police for different marginalized groups? And then I was thinking about, right now, I think, as a result of Sanctuary, one of the things that has been brought up is that there are different groups in East Hampton that feel marginalized, and historically speaking, are marginalized, and I would not discredit marginalization. And I'm seeing, I, I saw a lot of that being taken personally by the municipality, that we have no reason for you to, to feel fearful, and that's not okay to.
Who's we, I'm sorry.
Like, I know the mayor and the police chief had felt.
I, I, yeah.
Okay, the, right after the last Sanctuary City Council meeting, they were saying that it would be insulting for, to the police department, for someone in the city of East Hampton to be fearful of the police department, because there's been no history of having any sort of human rights against the police in the past.
And that may not be people's experience in other, from other communities, they may, they may come to East Hampton with baggage, from something that's happened elsewhere, and our police may or may not be cognizant of the individuals' experiences. Is that, is that kind of?
And, and I don't, I don't think there needs to be such indignation that people would be fearful. We are living in times where that's the reality for some people. So, a way to make the lines of communication, basically, what I want to ensure in the city of East Hampton is that every person who wants to be able to approach the police with something, has this clear of a path to be able to do so. And for the majority of people in East Hampton, simply going over to the police station and saying, I need to speak with a police officer, would be enough. But there are people with felonies, there are people who are on sex offender registries, there are people with mental health issues, there are people who are persons of color in our community, we have a large LGBTQ community within East Hampton, and not everybody, in my experiences in talking to constituents, would feel comfortable entering any police station voluntarily, it would just be a really scary thing for them to do. So, one of the things that I was thinking about was that if we had appropriate training, it would be nice if the city council, so we have three, we have three mows of official government within East Hampton, we have the mayor, we have the police and their judicial, what, what they do.
Law enforcement.
Law enforcement, and then the city council, and I feel, I understand saying that we can't start dictating to both of them, but we could be a tool within the community to make that path to approach the police a lot safer for people who feel fearful. Not because they're fearful of the individuals within our department, but for some people, going up to any police officer is scary for them. So, I think of myself in that situation and any other counselor, it's possible that a city counselor would not want to be approached in that way, and I think it's really necessary. I think everyone should receive that sort of education.
Would not want to be approached in, in what way?
Can you come with me to the police? Someone might not feel secure of being.
No, if someone didn't feel, and they wanted to, and they called me, I think if they called you, it's, okay, girl, happy to go with you.
But, but you never know.
And, and they might not feel comfortable with either you or myself to want to go, it may be someone else.
Right, which is why I think.
And, and you're saying that, no, boy, I would think that most city counselors would.
I would hope so.
Honor the, honor the opportunity to serve a constituent.
But every time I think about that, creating a subcommittee of a few counselors takes that choice out of people's hands.
It takes, yeah, it takes, that takes the choice out.
It also puts it into a committee that creates a public record. But making a formal statement that we're aware that there's differences in people's personal fear in approaching any formal police, and that as a role of city council, we would like to have an opportunity to receive diversity training, and then make that more of a formal relationship, to create liaison between, create liaisons of the city council, so that individual citizens can step up to the police if they need it, and they feel that they can't do that individually, that that would be a good community building for safe community policing, that.
That helps to bridge the gap, if there is a gap, and there certainly may very well be, between folks who would feel marginalized. And the police, and in fact, probably the majority of the community, the great majority of the community, I would hazard to say, but our whole society, the Constitution was based on protections for minorities, protection for, not only protections for minorities, but protection, by minority, I'm, I'm describing as those who weren't in the majority of a vote on something. So, those who are in the minority, don't win the election, don't win the vote, don't win the, the issue at hand, they're the minority, and then you go further, and there could be marginalized folks within the minority, or even from the minority. And I think, being cognizant of those issues and the marginalization that is felt by some people is something we need to keep on our conscience and on our, to keep present to, to stay present to. And, and if we can use either a commission or a statement, I think we're doing better for all our services.
I do too, and I think that, just because of everything that happened with Sanctuary and seeing this city be, the way it stands right now, we have nothing, we, you know, the middle is no fear, and let's say.
Excuse me one second, I, I just wanna, I, the discussion we were just having was based on, I want to be present to what's on our agenda now.
Oh, I am, I'm.
And, 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 and this is all within, the discussion was within the context of the Human Rights Commission.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I just wanted, and I also want to be clear with public, if someone, someone said, geez, you're bringing up, talking about Sanctuary.
No, no, no.
Well, we're not really, we're talking about the issues of the Human Rights Commission.
Yeah.
And how it would apply, so, I just wanted to be sure we kept it within that context for a public meeting and open meeting laws.
Understood.
Please, I'm, I didn't need to break.
I, I think the whole issue brought up fear for a lot of people. Reasons for fear, there are many different reasons for both sides of the issue to feel fear.
Right.
I think now that we're at a different point, I think for people who are fearful of having a Sanctuary, that fear's been dissipated a little bit, because it's not going to be in writing in the way that they were fearful. What I'm concerned about is I don't see what has been done for the other side of that, for people who are feeling the need for doing something, and I haven't seen anything to dissipate that fear. And while I think Sanctuary is not on the table right now, and I agree with you, I do think that we have a moral responsibility as a city council to see how we as a council can actually do something to alleviate that fear that goes beyond writing a moral statement that we, you know, would want one way or the other. I just see this as a tangible practice that we could do as a city council that, I guess the other part of that is that, like I was saying before, it's the city council, the mayor, and the police, and the different, um, different heads of departments, we're the only other government representative, municipality representative, and if people are fearful of the police, having, knowing that we're a mayor-strong city, the power there resides between the police and the mayor, so we would be that non-power entity that could serve as a liaison, because our paths don't cross into demanding what they do as police.
Mm-hmm.
And so I just, it just seems to me a good way to, for people who don't need that protection, who don't need that extra step to be able to approach the police about something, this wouldn't change anything for them. For people who are feeling scared when they're, if they have something they need to go to the police for, let's suppose someone, even something as simple as having a sign out and having that sign stolen, and being concerned that the police will not take it seriously. There's nothing saying that our police wouldn't take it seriously, but I can understand people's fear of that, so having someone being able to go and just bearing witness to that and being present, I think could go a long way, at least having the choice of having someone there.
Well, let us put it forth that both you and I certainly would feel free to go with anybody, to be supportive, and my guess is, most of the counselors would, so.
I think so too, but.
If, if not all.
But from a, from an academic standpoint, and teaching about these issues and stuff, I think it would be culturally irresponsible of us to offer ourselves up as a liaison without any sort of training, and I think that's a really important part of it.
So.
So, I just think it's something we should consider as a council.
I think it makes sense. Anything else?
No.
All right. Shall we, and we'll entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.